We're going to call the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of announcements or housekeeping before we start. First of all, this meeting is conducted in accordance with the guidance from the Governor's Office that suspends a number of the Brown Act requirements. So for that reason, we have a number of the planning commissioners remote. They are participating via Zoom. The speakers here on the dais tonight will be wearing their masks the entire time unless they are speaking.
No, I'm not hearing anything.
And then participants, of course, are also, including the public, are able to join this meeting via Zoom as well. It's also available livestream on K O C T.
Okay.
With that brief announcement, I will ask staff to conduct a roll call, please.
Good evening. Chairperson Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Bauma.
Here.
And for the record, Vice Chair Bauma is participating via Zoom. Counsel, pardon me, Commission Member Busk.
Here.
Commission Member Morrissey.
Here.
Mission Member Custer.
Here.
And Commissioner Custer is also participating by Zoom. Commissioner Crayhill.
Here.
And Commissioner Crayhill is participating by Zoom. And finally, Commissioner Goodkind.
Present.
And she is also participating by Zoom. So for the record, as you noted, Chair, you have four planning commissioners participating by Zoom and you have three commissioners in the chamber, so you do have a full quorum.
Great. Thank you for that. Moving along, communications on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any slips from anybody wishing to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there's no public request to speak on matters not on the agenda.
Thank you. So we'll move to the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which was on November 23rd. I'm going to do a roll call on this, just because we have so many commissioners that are remote. So all those in favor, please say aye. I'll start to my left. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Busk.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodkind.
Aye.
Commissioner Crayhill.
Aye.
Commissioner Custer.
I see her. She may need to unmute herself.
Oh, she came back in. Got it. Yeah, she must have got that out.
Commissioner Custer, if you would signal aye, if you can hear us, aye or nay for the minutes. We'll come back to Commissioner Custer. Vice Chair Bauma.
Aye.
And I too am an aye. Are we available for Commissioner Custer yet?
I thought I saw her name up there.
She's here.
She was there. She's still there.
She's muted.
Okay, maybe we have registered everybody as an aye. We'll come back to this item, if that's okay with staff, and ask for Commissioner Custer to weigh in when she has audio again. With that, then we will move to consent calendar. I don't see anything, agendas on the consent calendar nor transportation items. So we will go to the first public hearing item, which is item four, consideration of a parcel map and conditional use permit to allow for the subdivision of an existing 1.1 gross acre parcel. The applicant is Main Street Partner Incorporated. Project name is Ivy Ridge Subdivision. I'll ask for disclosures. I'll start with myself. I was on the planning commission last time we heard this item. It was a different project, but similar in nature. I also read staff report. Vice Chair Bauma. Your disclosure.
I also had the staff report. I had site visit and I was on the commission in 2015 when this was approved for a five lot subdivision.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey.
Read the staff report and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Busk.
Staff report. I'm familiar with the site and I also was on the commission when this was approved prior.
Commissioner Goodkind.
Site visit and staff report and I was on the commission when we gave them an extension, I think in 2018.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill.
I was also on the commission for the time extension, not for the original approval in 2015. Nothing else disclosed besides that.
Okay. And then Commissioner Custer, do we have audio yet for Commissioner Custer? Okay, what's our protocol here? Perhaps I'll ask the city attorney. We seem to have lost a commissioner who we had as part of the roll call. Continued participation by the commissioner. Barbara, if you can hear us and give us some guidance.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think we will, we can continue participation, subject to the commissioner's disclosures at a later date, or not a later date, but at a subsequent time. Hopefully, we can get the technical difficulties squared away before this item is finished. Certainly before she speaks or registers a vote on the item.
Okay, that's great. And Commissioner Custer, if you can hear us and you have another means of participating, either by calling in, or if you're having laptop issues, I think Zoom is available on the app on your phone, please go ahead and try that. We'll continue then with the item. We'll have Veronica Morones do her presentation. Go ahead, Veronica.
Thank you. Good evening. Chairperson Rosales, planning commissioners. My name is Veronica Morones, planning consultant. I'll be presenting Agenda Item Number Four to you this evening. The project site is an approximately 1.1 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of the Laurel and Ivy Road intersection within the Fire Mountain Neighborhood Planning Area. The project site has a general planned land use designation, a single-family detached residential and zoning designation of single-family residential. In 2015, the planning commission approved entitlements allowing for a five lot subdivision with five single-family homes and approved a time extension for the five lot subdivision in 2018. These entitlements are still valid at this time. The project applicant requests a tentative parcel map to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots for future development and a conditional use permit to allow a panhandle lot within the proposed subdivision pursuant to Section 1050 Y of the zoning code. The site is mostly vacant with existing paving and greenhouse structures on site, which would be removed as a part of the proposed project. Existing access is located off Ivy Road and would be maintained as a part of the proposed project. The project would divide the parcel into three lots at a proposed density of 2.6 dwelling units per acre. All proposed lots would exceed the minimum requirement of 10,000 square feet. Lot two proposes panhandle lot configuration, thus triggering the need for the conditional use permit. No residences are proposed as a part of the project, however grading paving, retaining walls and bio-retentioned swales are a part of the proposed project to ready the lots for future development. Access to lots one and three would be provided via the panhandled portion of lot two. A reciprocal access easement required under Condition Number 10 would provide access to lots one and three, which would allow for one curb cut on Ivy Road as opposed to three. This slide provides a more detailed lot configuration. The proposed bio-retentioned swales are shown adjacent to Ivy Road on Lot Three, the left-hand corner lot, and on the eastern edge of the project site for lots one and two. The area in gray and outlined in red denotes site distance requirement. A clear space easement would be required, subject to Condition Number 105 at the Ivy Road frontage access point. The proposed density of 2.6 dwelling units per acre is under the allowed base density for the site, which is 3.6 dwelling units per acre, in conformance with the general plan. The proposed project is consistent with the Fire Mountain Neighborhood policies outlined within the general plan's land use element, which dictates minimum lot sizes. The project exceeds the minimum lot requirement of 10,000 square feet and provides site clearances for health and safety purposes and would include a clear space easement along the frontage of Ivy Road. The proposed project complies with the city's zoning ordinances, development standards for the single-family residential zone, including minimum lot size, lot width, setbacks and standards pertaining to the panhandle. Additionally, staff has received no public comments at this point in time for the proposed project. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission confirm the proposed project is exempt for the purposes of SEQA and approve the requested entitlement, subject to the conditions outlined in the draft resolution. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions and the project applicant is on Zoom, available for questions as well.
Thank you, Veronica. Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind.
Thank you. On page four, Veronica, of the staff report, the first full paragraph says, although no development is proposed at this time, the proposed subdivision does include data that clearly shows that a suitable building pad would be provided for a custom home that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I wonder if you could expound on that?
Of course, Commissioner Goodkind. The proposed tentative map does include, on the plans provided, setbacks that are required under the underlying zoning, which outline the available building pad for a future proposed development. So in the event the project site is sold off independently each lot, or a future developer comes in to develop those homes, they would be subject to the building permit process to construct those residences, which would be reviewed in compliance with development standards and would meet those required setback.
So, just to follow up, so this sentence says for a custom home, so are there going to be three pads or one pad? And how do we know that it would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood if there's no plans yet?
So the proposed project involves a three lot subdivision, so it would be one residence per lot.
Right.
If the property owner chose to sell off each individual lot, then potentially that could be three different property owners who then come at various times to develop single-family residence on each lot.
Right.
And so when the project undergoes review through the building permit process, planning staff would review that for compliance with the zoning ordinance, including those setbacks, things like height requirements, landscaping, et cetera.
Okay. I just find that sentence a little bit confusing because it seems to indicate that there's already some information about what the development would be.
Understood. I do believe that the project applicant, when staff last spoke to them, intended to potentially sell off each individual lot and use the phrase "custom home," so I apologize for the lack of clarity there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bauma, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I was going to ask the question as far as like, the definition between a panhandle lot and basically a drive, because before with the five lot subdivision, it was just like a regular driveway that went in. And I like the way they combined the three lots with the one driveway. What would be the advantages to, like now it's a panhandle, we have to give it a conditional use permit. Why couldn't it just been a road or access or a driveway? Like, it seems like it's accessing three parcels rather than just one, like a normal panhandle usually does. This one's actually a driveway for all three. Is there some advantages to having a panhandle definition versus a road or a driveway?
Commissioner Bauma, I would defer that question to the project applicant, as they came in with the proposed panhandle lot. Staff didn't, as far as I'm aware, did not direct them to design the panhandle lot.
So Vice Chair Bauma, when we get to that point, I'll refer your question over to the applicant.
All right. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands from commissioners that are remote. Hang on a second. Did I miss anybody? Commissioner Crayhill or Commissioner Custer? Welcome, Commissioner Custer.
Thank you.
Can we get your disclosures before we move on, on this item?
Yes, I read the staff report.
Great, thank you. We did have a question on the dais from Commissioner Busk. Go ahead.
Lots two and three are substantially larger than the 6,000 square foot minimum lot requirement. What's to prevent a purchaser of Lot Three, for example, re-subdividing?
Well, if a future property owner wanted to try and subdivide their property, they would have to come back in through the city's entitlement review process and submit for a parcel map, at which point staff would review whether it meets the required zoning or subdivision, which does require a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So since neither lots one, two, or three exceed 20,000 square feet, in theory, that wouldn't be permissible.
So it'd be 10,000 square feet instead of the 6,000, which is on the diagram or the chart in page four.
So the underlying zoning dictates our single-family residential as a 6,000 minimum lot size, but the general plan land use element actually has a specific policy for the Fire Mountain Neighborhood Planning Area that dictates 10,000 square feet.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. The reason I asked that question is, if I remember right, the original subdivision, when we subdivided this into five lots, it required a substantial amount of work on Ivy Road to accommodate that many, that much traffic at that particular corner. And it was going to be a quite expensive project. And now I see only three lots. No problem if it stays three lots, but if it's then re-subdivided, it just seemed like it's a kind of a sneaky way around doing that work on Ivy Road that needs to happen.
So the trigger there is the 10,000 square foot.
Correct. With 10,000 square foot, then there's no problem.
Requirement, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it, Veronica, for the moment, for staff, or questions for staff. We'll turn then to the applicant. Applicant, if we could have your name for the record.
Good evening. Andrew Hadra. I'm the president and owner of Main Street Partners.
Thank you, Andrew. There was one question from Vice Chair Bauma. Vice Chair Bauma, if you want to re-ask your question.
I was just curious as to the idea of using that, the panhandle definition, rather than just put in a road like you, I think you're, are you the same applicant as before with the five lot subdivision, or are you a different owner?
I've owned the property now for seven years.
Okay, so you're the same applicant, basically?
Yes.
So, what was your logic? That's all. I'm just asking, like, I like the idea of using the same driveway for three lots. I'm just wondering why it's panhandle versus just another, like a road or whatever it would be called.
Well, I think functionally, it ends up being the same thing. The section there, the long panhandle, is actually incredibly wide. It's a 28-foot wide.
Right.
Basically, dimension of which 24 feet is going to be paved. And I think I can put a lot of the rest of the questions to bed by saying it is my intention, and I've started architecture on the houses. I do intend, at the moment, to build three houses on the lots. We're just not far enough along with the architecture. So from my point of view, at the moment, our plan is to get the map approved, manufacture the lots, which takes, you know, quite some time by the time you get through all the plans and the construction and so forth. At the same, we're going to be processing our architecture and we'll come back into the city for the architecture. And for what it's worth, not that it's necessarily germane to the approval of the lots that's pending tonight, but the architecture that we're planning are larger, single-story homes to take advantage of the larger lot size and address what we see as a niche that is unmet in North Coastal County. And I hope no one will be disappointed that I'm going to be reaching for pricing that the nearby residents of Fire Mountain will be very pleased with if I'm successful.
Thank you.
I am, at the moment, planning to build the project myself, and I won't bore you guys with the history of how we got here, but that is my plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodkind, did you follow up on your previous question as it relates to the design of the homes?
No, but I assume that that means no affordable housing in this project, right?
No affordable, no, no affordable housing, indeed.
Okay. No, I still think that's a confusing clause in the staff report that maybe should be reworded, but no, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners that are remote, any questions? I see shakings of heads, so thank you. We can always come back. So we will then turn to the public and their input. Staff, any slips to speak to this item for the public?
Chairman, we don't believe there's any public that want to speak on this item. We do believe there's public that want to speak on the next item.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion, perhaps a motion. So your choice, commissioners.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per SEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15315, and approve tentative parcel map P 2000002 and conditional use permit CUP 200004 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020 P 36, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodkind. We have a motion. Would somebody like to make a second?
I'll second.
I heard Commissioner Busk first. Thank you, Commissioner Custer. So we have a motion. We have a second. I'll do a roll call vote for the ayes and nays, starting at my left. Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Busk.
Aye.
Turning to my commissioners that are remote, Vice Chair Bauma.
I would also approve this, and I just want to commend the applicant for doing something like a single-family, one-level house, because I think it is needed, and thank you so much for your ideas. So, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Goodkind.
It's a yes for me.
Commissioner Custer.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crayhill.
Aye.
I too will register a yes on my vote.
So Mr. Chairman, we'll record that as seven in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we will turn then to item five. Item five is a consideration of a conditional use permit to request the approval to allow full-service alcohol sales at the existing Regal Cinema, which is located at the Mission Park Place Commercial Retail Center. The applicant is Regal Cinemas Incorporated. Disclosures. Commissioner Morrissey.
I read the report. Familiar with the site.
Commissioner Busk.
The same. I've also been to movies at that movie house.
Vice Chair Bauma.
I also offer the same. I also go to the movies there.
Commissioner Goodkind.
I read the staff report and I'm quite familiar with the site. There used to be a film club that held, that showed special movies there at that site. Unfortunately, it doesn't exist anymore, but yes, quite familiar with the location.
Thank you. Commissioner Crayhill.
I don't have anything to disclose.
And Commissioner Custer.
I read the staff report and I've been to several movies there.
Thank you. I have similar disclosures. I read the staff report. I haven't been to a movie, to see a movie there in many years, but I did when my kids were little. So we have Mr. Greenbauer presenting tonight. Richard?
Good evening, Chairman Rosales, members of the planning commission. Richard Greenbauer here to present a very quick and brief request from the Regal Cinemas to upgrade from a Type 41 beer and wine license to a Type 47 full alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide eating and drinking establishment. This theater currently, although it's not operating today, does have a beer and wine license with a full menu available to the patrons and is part of the business model to adapt over time with theaters closing on a regular basis. They are coming forward with this new request. The subject site is in the Mission Marketplace, which is on the northwest corner of College and 76, and is situated in the rear portion of the commercial area. You can see the residential around the theater, and it's completely closed off for access to those residential areas. So everything for the retail center has to enter and exit off of college. The reason we're in front of this body this evening is the 1992 zoning ordinance requires that three findings be made in order to allow full alcohol sales. Staff has worked with OPD and to go over all three to make sure it is consistent with the zoning general plan and in compliance with the conditions that have been placed upon it for beer and wine service. There's been no issues from Oceanside Police Department with the service of alcohol at the facility and therefore a supportive of bringing this forward with a request to modify it to a Type 47. That concludes staff's presentation. I recommend that the commission issue a Class One category of exemption existing facilities and adopt the attached resolution with conditions of approval and Resolution Number 2020 P 37. And that concludes.
You're correct, Mr. Greenbauer. That was a very brief, but good enough presentation. Thank you. I did have one question, just for my education. So serving alcohol, or serving beer and wine versus full alcohol service, does that require a change in the menus, the types of foods that they offer? I'm thinking more robust food would be required for more robust alcohol, or am I wrong there?
That is not correct. The ABC has made the determination that it's a bona fide eating and drinking establishment, so it does have to have a certain menu item, but it's not in conjunction with our ordinance and the requirement for full alcohol in the CUP.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Greenbauer? I can't see the other commissioners to see if they have their hands raised, so I'll ask any commissioners that are remote, any questions? Don't see any. Okay. And I think you indicated the applicant was available tonight.
The applicant is available. If you have any questions directly for Mr. Rawlings. If not, he does not have a presentation this evening.
Mr. Rawlings, I see you there. Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Rawlings? Okay, I don't see any requests or any questions coming your way, Mr. Rawlings.
Mr. Chairman, could I add one or two quick points and questions?
You certainly can. Go ahead. It's your time.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening and considering Regal Cinema's proposal here this evening. We are, we do concur with all of the, with the staff recommendation and the conditions of approval, though. I wanted to ask a question of the commission. There is, in the resolution, it's Condition Number 11, and it says, "Sales, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted only between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m." We have during the week, Sunday through Thursdays, stopped, we had planned to stop our sales of alcoholic beverages, all alcoholic beverages at 10:00 p.m., and then on the weekends, a little bit later. But the way that the condition reads, it says "sales, service, and consumption." And I would like a little, I would submit to you and request that we eliminate And I would like a little, I would submit to you and request that we eliminate the word "consumption." Even if we do a last-call scenario and stop sales at, say, 9:30 p.m., and somebody takes their beverage into the auditorium, we don't have a lot of control over how quickly they, you know, consume their beverage. Most of us would think that a half hour is, you know, probably adequate, but Regal obviously doesn't ever want to put themselves in a position of being out of compliance with the conditions of approval, and it would really be inconvenient to, at 10 o'clock, go in and do an auditorium sweep and remove all the alcoholic beverages. So it's certainly not our intentions to sell any alcohol beyond, say, 10 o'clock. It's just that with the consumption portion of it, it would require us to stop sales, say, at 9 o'clock, just to be certain that nobody still is consuming any alcohol after 10 o'clock. So I did have a brief email exchange with Richard. He's been nothing but terrific to work with on this. He was going to check with Oceanside PD on this, but that was the only thing that I wanted to discuss. Again, we're not trying to, you know, go any later. We're fine with stopping sales at 10 o'clock. It's just the word "consumption" becomes, all of a sudden, potentially problematic. And so, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Rawlings. I'll turn to Mr. Greenbauer. Maybe he can address it. It sounds like he's been, this was teed up to you, so what do we know about this?
Yes, Chairman Rosales. That was brought up just a little while ago by Mr. Rawlings. I will confer with the Oceanside Police Department. The conditions that were sent over to me came straight off the ABC license. If there was an administrative error or the way that he imposed those conditions when he sent them to me, it might just be the way, where he put the "and" and "consumption" in the definition there. I will follow up with him, and if we need to make an administrative correction, we can do so at that time.
Thank you. Does that sound agreeable to you, Mr. Rawlings?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll turn one more time to the commissioners. I don't see any.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. For Mr. Greenbauer, in your brief report to us, could you repeat what you said about OPD hasn't experienced any problems?
That's correct, Commissioner Goodkind. I've consulted with Oceanside Police Department's member in charge, and there's been no reports of any issues with the service of beer and wine with their full menu in the facility to date, and he provided me with the conditions straight off of the ABC license.
So that was clarification from OPD that there have been no issues with the beer and wine, and now we're being asked to extend it to full bar?
That's.
Full alcohol service. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodkind. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, and I understand we had at least one member of the public that wanted to provide some input. Do we have that member online, or are we reading something?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have three members, so we'll see.
Okay, great. Then we'll take them in turn if.
So we're back to two.
Two, okay. We have two members of the public that would like to speak on this item. I'll let you, Scott, or somebody tee them up. And speakers, if you would, when we ask you to address the commission, if you would give us your name, please, for the record.
Okay. We got Speaker Erica Leary. Are you on the line?
Erica Leary, we see you on the Zoom call.
She's muted.
But it looks like you are muted. Can you unmute yourself, Erica? Erica, we'll let you work through that. Scott, why don't we go to the next caller?
Okay. Next caller is Joseph Perez. If you can just unmute your mic.
Mr. Perez, if you would unmute yourself, and then you're ready for the commission. We'll give them a couple of minutes, because I know this technology, I've had my own experiences, can be a little vexing it sometimes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While we're waiting, just a follow-up question on that consumption issue.
Yes, go ahead.
And the time, so if currently there's beer and wine, what is the consumption rule In terms of the.
I don't.
Cut-off hour?
Commissioner Goodkind, my understanding was that the conditions that are in front of you are the same conditions that are on the ABC license for the beer and wine. So I'll have to get together with Oceanside PD and ask them on the clarity on the consumption component.
Okay, thanks.
That's a good question. So I think Mr. Greenbauer is going to check on a couple of things, the term "consumption", and to verify if the hours are the same as they had been for beer and wine. So we don't have any success in bringing our two speakers in.
I'm here on the phone. I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Yes, absolutely. Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, sure. This is Erica Leary, and I actually wasn't calling to make a comment. I was just calling to listen to the meeting, so, but I wanted to clarify since you were trying to reach me to unmute, so. But since I am here on the line, I'll just quickly say that I am the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition and a resident here of Oceanside, and responsible alcohol sales and service is definitely an issue we've worked on for over 25 years. You know, way back before movie theaters were selling alcohol, we definitely had concerns about being able to monitor minors' access in dark movie theaters, but that seems to be the way movie theaters are operating these days, so I don't necessarily have any input or concerns to share. But I would note that "sales, service, and consumption" is standard ABC language and typically how they phrase their hours in all their licensing. So as much as I don't want to advocate the applicant extending that language to, say, 11:00 p.m. or midnight, that's possibly how the ABC would recommend that being worded of when all of those items, "sales, service, and consumption," would be reasonable to conclude. So it could mean changing that to 11:00 p.m. or something. That's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Good input. Appreciate that. Mr. Perez, have we been successful in pulling Mr. Perez in? Mr. Perez, if you can hear us, but you're unable to get into the meeting the traditional way, you can, we'll give you a couple of minutes. You can call in, perhaps? Let's give it a minute, and then city attorney, if we are unsuccessful in getting Mr. Perez in, I know he had a slip in to speak to this item, do we just continue on without his input?
Yes, I think so. Much the same as if the person were in chambers and didn't show up to the microphone when their name was called. I'm not sure what else we can do.
No, I appreciate it. That's good guidance. I'll use a stall tactic to give Mr. Perez maybe a little bit extra time by following up my own question that I got my idea from Erica, who was just on the call with us, to Mr. Rawlings, the applicant. So what would preclude somebody from buying an alcohol beverage, going into the dark theater after that, and sharing that beverage with a minor? Is there any sort of, I'll use your word, auditing or compliance that's done by theater staff to go around and make sure that consumption is only being done by adults?
Yes, a great question. I've had this question come up quite a bit. Yes, we send a member of the staff, who is over the age of 21 years of old, to do auditorium monitoring on a regular basis, not less than every 30 minutes. And that's not just a quick peek in there. It is go down to the front of the movie theater, stand, take a look, walk all the way up to the very top of the seats, stand and look, go to the other side of the auditorium, and go to the top and look, and then go back down to the bottom. So we make kind of an H pattern, if you would, throughout every auditorium. And we are, our members are trained to be looking for the cups that alcoholic beverages are served in. All of our beverage, alcoholic beverages are served in different cups than what you would get a soda in or a cup of coffee. They're clear plastic cups, so they're very easily recognizable, and we're doing these on a very, very regular basis. In practice, there are well over 200, or about 200, I want to say, movie theaters in the state of California that are operating in under a similar type of model, and we just haven't seen any widespread issues with minors drinking. One, the beverages are, they're not, they're not cheap. It's like anytime you go to any type of entertainment venue and you purchase an alcoholic beverages, most of us are a little sticker shock. It's really intended to just simply be a luxury amenity for those adults that might want to enjoy that type of beverage. Statistically speaking, only about 10% of the adult population will actually make the purchase of one alcoholic beverage during their visit to the movie theater, and only about 10% of that 10% would make a purchase of a second alcoholic beverage. And most of that reason is, is that we all have a tendency to purchase our concessions before we walk into the auditorium, buy our popcorn, and so on and so forth, and you might buy, my wife and I might buy a glass of wine. The odds of getting up out of our seat to go get another beverage are very, very limited. The only real reason any of us ever really get out of our seats during the movie is to either use the restroom, or we've got a call from the babysitter, or something along those lines. So we just have, you know, through our monitoring, through our ID checks, every time somebody comes back up to the podium, or I mean, to the podium, I'm sorry, to the concession stand, there is an ID check that goes on, and, you know, we do it in the lobby so that we've got a lot of people to observe the individual that's grabbing the drink. We often do follow some people back into the auditorium. If they've recently made one purchase, we kind of will follow them back in to make sure that they're the only person that consumed it. Also, people that look, you know, quite honestly, a little bit younger toward the age, in their early twenties, we'll take a look at. This is, you know, management training to do that, but by and large, the consumption of alcohol is not a, or the service of minors or people passing it off just has not been something that we've seen any issues with.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rawlings. Okay, we've given Mr. Perez quite a bit of time to see if we can get him squared away. Mr. Perez, are you available at this point? It looks like he is not, so using the guidance from the city attorney, we will unfortunately, for Mr. Perez, move on.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we're not absolutely sure that Mr. Perez wanted to comment on this one. Similar to Ms. Leary, there's a little confusion on our end, and we'll clean that up in the future. So again, we're not absolutely certain that he did want to comment. Perhaps he just wanted to listen. We're not sure.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Okay, well then, unless there's any further questions for staff or for Mr. Rawlings.
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rawlings, a follow-up question. What, are you with Regal?
I am not. I'm actually a third-party consultant that works with Regal Edwards up and down the state of California, assisting them with permits and licenses to sell alcohol at their various theaters.
Okay, regarding your statistics, what percentage of people buying alcohol at the full alcohol service theaters are buying hard liquor as opposed to beer and wine?
I wouldn't know that exact number off the top of my head. My understanding is that beer and wine is still the preferred beverage of choice, but again, we're just looking to offer a full variety of alcoholic beverages for those people that might want to have a distilled spirit. We have quite a bit of demand now for, like, pre-made, excuse me, cocktails, see them in cans nowadays. Cut Water is a big manufacturer of those. This might be, you know, margarita in a can type of product. We don't do any mixing at the, you know, at the bar. You're not going to.
So that was my next question. If somebody's buying hard liquor, what are the hard liquor options?
You know, we do carry a variety of products, you know, the gin-based type of, and vodka, and, you know, tequila-based, you know, like margaritas and so on and so forth. We do not sell shots to anybody. It has to be in a mixed drink, otherwise we won't make the transaction.
So these are already mixed cocktails?
Many of them are where, because again, we don't want our staff to be taking the time of mixing, you know, you know, gin with some tonic, so it's easier for us to have pre-made types of alcoholic beverages that we can just pour into a cup and serve it rather than doing any kind of mixing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodkind. Any other commissioners, questions for staff or for Mr. Rawlings? I don't see any hands raised or nodding of the head, so we'll move to the next obvious step, and that would be entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Tom.
Go ahead.
We'd like to confirm the issuance of Class 1 categorical exemption per SEQA, Article 19, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution approving the CUP 2021 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Morrisey. Anybody like to second that motion?
I would like to second it, but also ask the maker of the motion if you would like to maybe add in that one caveat on number 11 in the staff report that possibly staff can review with OPD, and Mr. Rawlings here to find out if maybe the "consumption" word can be, like, modified or taken out. Because when you think about it, if you do get a drink at whatever the time is, 10 o'clock, and you're going to down it in, what, five minutes? That's actually worse for someone to actually drink alcohol that fast. So I think that, I think that what he says is completely right. I've gone to a lot of the theaters myself and ordered a drink, and usually get a drink when you first sit down, and you probably only have one, because he's right, you don't ever want to leave your movie. So it's going to be very rare that someone's going to order a drink probably exactly when the time limit is over at 10 o'clock. So I'd feel confident that hopefully between staff, OPD, and Mr. Rawlings, they could figure that out, and.
And I agree with Vice Chair Bauma with that, so.
Okay, so we'll add, we'll have Mr. Morrisey add that to his motion if staff would follow up on that. So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Yes.
By Vice Chair Bauma. Any further discussion, Mike, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, is the motion to delete the word "consumption"?
No, I think the motion is to confirm if the language is going to stay as is, or if there's some wiggle room. If it was written that way, there may not be any wiggle room, because it sounds like there might be an ABC thing. It's clarification, I think, is what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, then let's do a roll call vote. The maker of the motion, Commissioner Morrisey?
Approve.
Commissioner Busk?
Approve.
Vice Chair Bauma?
Approve.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Approve.
Commissioner Crayhill?
Aye.
And Commissioner Custer? She's muted, but she, I could tell she said aye. If you could unmute yourself, just so we can all hear. Susan, there you go.
Yes, there.
Thank you. And I too am an aye. So, City Planner?
We'll record that as seven in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rawlings, good luck. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item six. Actually, item number six is on the agenda, but it looks like it's going to be continued until January 11th. So we will skip item six on the agenda and go to appeal the city planner's determination. We don't see anything on the agenda there, so we'll go to discussion items. We too have a, an update on state legislation for 2020 by the city planner. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Item seven involves a memo that provides a summary of recent bills that relate to topics that we believe are pertinent to the planning commission and have some interest to the commission. As in recent years, the legislature has mandated certain actions or prescribed unlimited actions that cities can take regarding certain land use actions. So this, this trend has continued this year. This session, there was quite a few less bills, fewer bills than in past years. The staff memo notes there was only 428 bills that made it to the governor's desk. A number of analysts believe this was due to the delay in the legislature due to COVID. And then once they reconvene, the focus on COVID and economic recovery. And perhaps this may result in a larger amount of bills next session. So I'll go through the bills. They're generally categorized by two categories, land use or general land use. And then I'll get to the housing production bills specifically. I'll start at the, the bottom of page one, AB 1286. This garnered a lot of attention both from the league and, and other interested parties. It requires that shared mobility providers, that's a term for e-scooters or e-bikes that we see commonly, particularly in the bigger cities. Shared mobility providers have to enter into agreements or, or permits, obtain permits from cities, and then cities have to adopt regulation. So this is an attempt to regulate and manage these mobility providers a little bit better than what has been done in the past. The next one down is AB 1458. This increases the maximum test results, the variances that those test results can have for edible cannabis products. And this is due to equipment differences, et cetera. Going over to the next page, page two, AB 1525. This provides that an entity does not commit a crime by providing financial services involving cannabis. This has been a very large hurdle for a number of cannabis businesses. There are stories that taxes have been paid literally in cash by pulling up an armored truck to City Hall, et cetera. So this is interesting to see this change on that. The next one down is AB 1628. This requires that environmental justice be addressed by the coastal commissioner who's assigned to that particular topic, but also requires that environmental justice be addressed in coastal permits. Going down a couple items, AB 2800. This requires state agencies to consider economic impacts, climate change. A little bit different angle on climate change, not just the environmental impact, but the economic impact of that. And then dropping down in the middle of the page, SB 21. This lowers the ABC brew pub license requirements, minimum requirements from 200 barrels to 100 barrels. You recall, we recently had a craft brewery ordinance that was adopted by the city, a couple of years ago, anyway. The next one is SB 67. This establishes standards for designating appellations of origin for cannabis. This is very similar to what the wine industry have, has. So a particular area can get their own appellation and, and market and brand for that. Dropping down several more, SB 895. This requires the State Energy Resources Conservation and Development Commission to provide support for zero emission fuels, infrastructure and technology. And I'll mention a little bit more regarding zero emission fuels in a minute. And then the last one on page two, SB 1320. This requires the State Office of Planning and Research to develop a California climate change assessment, no less than every five years. The state OPR is the state agency that planning deals with the most, along with the state housing. But they will be doing a climate assessment. So starting on page three are the housing bills. And as in similar years in the past, the governor signed 15 bills all in one day. And I think they do this to draw attention to the signing of the bills and, and the, the importance of housing, given our housing crisis. I didn't address all the 15 bills. Some of them are rather mundane. But some of those bills are here, along with some others that weren't signed on that September 28th. But anyways, we'll go through the housing bills here. AB 69, the first one, it creates a financing program, including loans for ADUs to help finance those. The next one, AB 139, it requires housing elements to assess emergency shelters and to address homelessness. So you can anticipate seeing that as part of the housing element update that'll be coming to the planning commission in the near future. AB 168 is an interesting one. It adds Native American consultation to projects that are approved or submitted under SB 35. However, SB 35 is exempt from SEQA. So it's, we're not sure how that one's going to play out. For your own knowledge, we have only had one inquiry regarding an SB 35 project, and we don't get much interest at all. And I believe it's because of the 50% requirement for affordable housing. There's just not much interest in our community. AB 725, the next one down. It requires that housing elements that are adopted after January 2022 provide 25% of the moderate units and 25% of the above moderate units be on zones that allow for at least four units. So no single-family zoning. This doesn't affect our current housing element update that, again, is going to be coming to you very soon because we anticipate ours is going to be adopted in April 2021. But it's a good idea of what is coming from the state. And certainly, the next housing element will have to abide by this. And it's, again, it's, it's indicative of the mandates that the state keeps applying to the cities, particularly on housing element. It seems to be a popular object of their legislation, housing element up. Dropping down a couple items, AB 1561. This has garnered a lot of attention. It extends housing projects, not all projects. It has to be a housing project, though that definition of a housing project is somewhat loose. It includes mixed-use projects with, if there's a certain percentage of housing units in it. But it extends housing projects by 18 months. And this is based on the idea that COVID is stalling these projects, and they may come back later on after COVID. This is in addition to the time extension, automatic one-year extension that the city granted recently when we went through our time extension update ordinance several months ago. So this is in addition to that. Going down a couple more, AB 2345. This one has also garnered a lot of attention. It expands the density bonus up, up to 50%. Right now, it's a 35% maximum. It decreases the required percent of affordable units for the waivers that are granted. And again, the waivers are doing away or exempting a development standard. It increases waivers if you go up to 100% affordable. And it mandates that parking be a maximum of one and a half spaces per unit, or even zero, if the project is renting to people 62 years of age or older. Going down two more, AB 3182. This requires common interest owners to allow rentals of units. And also, it provides a ministerial approval of one ADU and one junior ADU under certain requirements that are too numerous to spell out for you right now. But it does provide for, in some instances, ministerial approval of those two units. SB 20, pardon me, SB 288. This provides CEQA exemptions for transportation projects such as bike, pedestrian, transit, light rail, et cetera. And that's the major bills. I would encourage you, you can go through the state website if you're curious about the, the bills. I will mention on page four, the executive order that I believe you've probably heard of. It directs the state to require by 2035, all new cars and trucks that are sold in California be zero emission vehicles. So that it's quite a, quite an expansive executive order. And then finally, I listed some bills that were vetoed by the governor. He was very active, and he explains his reasons. You're free to review those at your own leisure. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. I had a question on 1851, which is on page three. WICS, just clarification because it lists, all the things in that bill are so different. Housing on religious institution parking lots, reduction in parking. Or is it all parking-related stuff? Is that its common thread?
It, it's all addressing housing on an existing religious institution site. So all those criteria that I continued to list apply to that housing project on a religious institution site.
Like a church parking lot?
Exactly.
Interesting. Okay. Any commissioners? Questions for Jeff?
Jeff, could you tell us what a junior ADU is? How does, how, what's the difference between a junior ADU and an ADU?
I believe it's the size. Let me, let me check on that and get back to you. But I believe it's the size and there's.
I think a junior is attached.
And, and I think it can, I think an ADU can be attached as well, Commissioner Goodkind. But let me get back to you.
I appreciate that. Yeah. And if we go to AB 3074, does that mean that when we have projects out in the farm country, all of those projects will be evaluated to make sure that they have these fuel reduction limits built into the landscaping plan?
AB 3074?
Yes. Because I'm sure we have some property that are in, in high fire hazard areas.
It, it does establish these standards. I don't believe that planning would be involved, just as we're not involved now with defensive spaces around buildings. But I do think it, it's an important bill, and that's why I listed it, because it does affect defensive spaces around buildings.
So how would we, how would we, as planning commissioners, see whether or not this is going to happen if we are evaluating a new subdivision? Will the fire department tell us that it's okay, or?
And that's a good question, Commissioner Busk. I would assume it would be fire, either state or our own local fire. So that is a good question. I can follow up on that as well to give an idea.
That'd be great.
I'm pretty sure, well, as long as I've been here, I haven't reviewed a particular housing site, a project for fuel reduction. We do review subdivisions for fuel reductions on a, on a bigger scale.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners on remote Zoom that have questions?
I do.
Commissioner Goodkind, go ahead.
I just think it's, it's interesting. We should note what was vetoed, which is at the end of this report. Thank you, Jeff, for putting this together. But, you know, some of these things, I guess, are not going to make it through because they were vetoed, like the financing for ADUs. So that's, that's an interesting list there. But I have a question about the executive order. So the executive order directs the state to require by 2035, all new cars. So could, could a future executive reverse that, Jeff?
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner Goodkind. I'm not that familiar with the, the procedures at the state level. I would imagine that another governor could reverse the executive order, similar to what we're hearing at the national level about reversing executive orders. I, I have heard recently that, I believe it was General Motors, that opposed this executive order and even filed a, didn't file the lawsuit but joined in on it, and then recently changed their mind, and now they're going to support it. So it does seem to be garnering some support.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, anybody else?
Thank you for.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good report. Okay, I think we only have commissioner reports left on the agenda, so I don't really have anything this time. Maybe a question about the schedule, Jeff or Scott? Today's the seventh. Do we, are we done for the month for meetings? I don't recall what we talked about last time.
Chair and Commissioners, yes, the, the December, two weeks from today, so that would be 21. That has been canceled. We have no items.
Okay.
So the next meeting is January, I believe it's the 13th. And we do have items for that meeting. And I can go over that on my city planner report.
Great, thank you.
It's January 11th, sorry.
Okay. Vice Chair Bauma, any reports?
I have nothing to report, although I have to say that doing a Zoom meeting was, I guess I miss you guys. I kind of, I want to try it out, but I think I'm going to come back next time into the dais. I think that'd be, it's more fun. And also to wish all of you guys a great holiday, because I guess I won't be seeing you until January. So Happy New Year, have a great Christmas, holiday, Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, and we'll see you guys next year.
Yeah, we miss everybody who's in, isn't here as well. And yeah, be safe out there, Louise and all the other commissioners. Commissioner Crayhill, any, any reports?
Nothing that's necessarily directly related here, but I can let you know that we just got word that the Water Resources Development Act at the federal level, which authorizes Army Corps projects, included the increase in funding for the San Luis River Flood Control Project that we've had going since the 70s, ran out of money, authorized amount of money. And so this will actually increase that, which will allow that project to move forward finally, and hopefully eventually allow it to be turned over to the cities. We don't have the federal government involved there anymore. And also included language to get the special shoreline study done within two years. It's been there since the year 2000, waiting to get finished. So hopefully we'll make progress on that, which could bring federal money for some standard punishment projects.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Busk?
No, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodkind?
No report, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey? You bet. And Commissioner Custer?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. So Jeff, we will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, do you have that definition? I think we have a definition of a junior ADU, and it says it's a dwelling unit, no more than 500 square feet, contained entirely within an existing or proposed single-family structure. It shall include an efficiency kitchen, may include sanitation facilities, separate. So, yeah, Commissioner Goodkind was right. It has to be within the existing dwelling, but it, there's also a size limitation on it as well. So it's small and it's attached.
Yeah, thank you.
Your agenda, as we mentioned, December 21 has been canceled. January 11, we have the Sunrise Assisted Living, which was postponed from today. We also have Barnwell Estates subdivision. January 25, there's no items at this time. February 8, we've scheduled the Brother Benno's conditional use permit that the Standing Committee reviewed, finished up their review recently. So we'll bring that to the full commission on February 8. That's the last planning commission item that we have scheduled going forward. Counsel, on December 2, there were no items. On December 9 is swearing in only. There is no action. On December 16 and January 6, there are no planning items for counsel. Going out to January 20, we have modifications on Article 41, which were approved by the coastal commission when they certified Article 41. Article 41 deals with our use permits, and they certified it with very innocuous modifications, such that, we'll bring it back to the council. And going off the top of my head, I think the modifications essentially affect whether we can revoke a. revoke a conditional use permit under certain circumstances or not. And so it's really the, the changes that they made were just wordsmithing from our mind. In addition, on January 20, we'll take the 1011 South Tremont, the project that you heard at your last meeting. They have to approve the relocation plan at the council level. The general plan update continues. The survey was recently completed on the neighborhood planning areas. We had 756 responses, so we're quite pleased with that. There's now a visioning survey, which is available. And both of these will be used to identify issues, goals, policies and actions. The neighborhood planning survey was more at the neighborhood level, and then the visioning is more general and broad, citywide. The Southmore Hills Community Plan, we have received a draft framework from the consultants. This is being revised based on staff comments. Then we'll present it to the city council and the public, and they'll have a public review, we anticipate early in 2021. And that framework will not be adopted per se, but will ask for some form of endorsement so that we can use that to draft the Southmore Hills Community Plan. And then that community plan would go through the formal adoption process. The housing element update, as I noted last meeting, we have 5,400 units, and we're going to be looking first in our corridors. And then if we can't find enough capacity in the corridors, we'll go elsewhere. In order to better accommodate in the corridors, we'll be looking at streamlining, using a programmatic EIR, reducing parking, increasing density, having by right approvals in some instances, with the hope that if we can accommodate more housing within the corridors, it will relieve the pressure outside the corridors, or in other words, in the existing neighborhoods. And finally, on the general plan update, we have three community workshops that are scheduled via Zoom. On January 12, the land use, mobility and noise elements will be discussed. It'll be open to the public. And on January 13, the community facilities, the conservation element and the safety element will be discussed. And then finally, on January 19, the housing element. Finally, on COVID, the, as the chair mentioned, the city managers requested that everyone wear masks in the chambers unless speaking, so we'll ask the planning commissioners to abide by that as well. We have discussed at the staff level, the idea to have, just to go all Zoom. And so I wanted to talk to you folks about that. I appreciate Commissioner Bauma's comments earlier. On the other hand, given the spike in the numbers that we're going through right now, anything we can do to reduce exposure seems to be the prudent thing to do. I couldn't count the number of meetings I've attended. I attend Sandag meetings and Coastal Commission meetings, et cetera, and they're done entirely on Zoom. We need to work out a few logistics on our side. Public testimony, PowerPoints, how do we, how do we trigger PowerPoints remotely? In initial conversations with IT staff, we believe we can overcome those technological hurdles. So I guess I'm just posing it to the commission. Would you not want to do that? Would you object? Are you okay? Or you want to try it and see how it goes? Or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'll weigh in first. So, you know, I work for the city of San Diego, and we have, we were doing a lot of things via Zoom at the beginning. Then we kind of got a bit more relaxed, and now because of the uptick, we're going back to many more things. We're being encouraged to stay home and do things via Zoom. We do, I have a presentation tomorrow with city council, city, city of San Diego City Council. All of that is done via Zoom. And I know their council members are participating, sometimes in person, sometimes remotely. I guess if I could, I guess my opinion would be to see where things go, Jeff. And if, in fact, the numbers go up, that to, at that point, maybe shift a little bit and, and only do remote. Again, this is just my opinion, others may feel differently. You're right, though, the, the biggest challenge is to try to get the technology right and participating in a manner that still gets the business done. And that sometimes can be a real challenge, but I've also seen it be done very successfully. So that's not a great answer, but, you know. I guess I'll just summarize by saying, if we could maybe hold that thought and see where things go, it's just my opinion, and maybe others have different ideas. Any commissioners, Mr. Morrissey?
No, I think that's, you know, reasonable and logical, and so we can see the attitude.
There's a richness to being able to see in person, to have meetings in person.
Yeah.
That you don't get through a Zoom meeting.
It's very different.
Yeah, so if I had a way going to a Zoom, not going to a Zoom, if conditions get significantly worse, then it would be 60% go to Zoom, 40% go. However, if there's a way, if 60, 40 the other way, 60% let's stay in person, 40% Zoom. I would prefer to be in person. So like you suggested, I think it's premature to make that decision, but maybe by January 11, it will be an easy decision.
Right. And I agree in the term, the richness of the, of the participation is different. I won't say diminished, but different. If you don't have the in-person activity, I mean, we've, we've seen that just in, with respect to the public's input, it's very different than when they're sitting here in the chambers, and it's just much more active, and we get much more participation. Same, I think, holds true to some degree with the commissioners' ability to, to interact up here. So commissioners, Goodkind or anybody else? Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind.
Thanks, Susan.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, I guess I feel like the time is now, because this is already a very serious situation. But, and, and sort of highlighted by the fact that at least two of us were asked to participate by Zoom today to keep the numbers in chambers down. So if, you know, if two out of five of us are being asked to participate in this manner, I think it might be appropriate for all of us to, because I, I do, I do agree that in-person is always preferable, but we're in the middle of a raging pandemic. And so, you know, we're all making sacrifices. So I, I fully support if the technology can support it going to all Zoom until this thing calms down. Especially because at least two of us have to be by Zoom. So, you know, it kind of makes it more even, I guess.
Commissioner Custer, you had your hand up?
Yes, well, I prefer in-person always when possible. Maybe we could rotate that a couple of us do Zoom, or two or three of us at the next several upcoming meetings and take turns, and ultimately get back to in-person as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair, just.
I'm sorry, who did I, who, Commissioner Crayhill? Go ahead.
I'm not going to be long-mended. I would echo a lot of what Commissioner Goodkind said. I mean, if we could bring, my main concern is public participation, obviously, but that's not changing. That's not what we're talking about changing right now. We're talking about whether commissioners are going to be on Zoom or not. And I do think that there is a differential in the participation amongst commissioners, unfortunately, Zoom versus in-person, and it might just facilitate a better participation if we were all in the same medium. Just in terms of having gallery view and just the interactions, I think, would, would actually be enhanced than the current way that we're doing it right now, where it's kind of split.
To that point, because I haven't done one of these via Zoom with this group I have at work, of course, what is the interaction and feel on your side with us in the chamber? How, how is that? I mean, honestly, frankly?
Not as good. Well, I can tell you what mine is.
Sure.
Since I had it tonight, I was all tied in, ready to go, everything was great. And then I got kicked out and couldn't get back in, and so on and so forth. And, you know, ultimately, I did get back in, but there was a brief period there where I thought I wouldn't, and I was about to say, I guess I can't do it, just as I got back in. So hit and miss, I guess.
By the way, that reminded me, we needed to go back to item, the minutes, and get your yay or nay on an approval of the minutes. Everybody else was a yay.
Oh, so yay also.
Okay, great. Glad we came back to that. Commissioner Goodkind, did you have any thoughts on, again, I'm curious as to how your participation is from your side? Does you, you feel obviously like there's something missing, but can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, I think for me, the main issue is that everybody is on equal footing, because we are all equals. And so it's, it's, the, the technologically, the experience is fine from my perspective, but I don't believe that you guys can see us the way that we can see you.
Right.
And so I feel like if, you know, if, if, if some of us are going to be on Zoom, all of us should be on Zoom, just to make it an equal experience. And I also, I, I saw the policy that came out today about taking your mask off while you're speaking. And I just want to, like, my opinion about that is, you know, when you're speaking, you're giving out the most mist.
Right.
Chambers, chambers is, you know, we don't know how well-ventilated it is for purposes of a pandemic, and people are sharing that, that microphone at the podium. I didn't, I didn't see it being wiped down in between speakers. Some, some people are wearing masks, other people aren't. So I personally am more comfortable working by Zoom until the pandemic is under control. But especially since some of us have to, I think all of us should. And, and that's my last word on it. Thank you.
Of course. A hand up? I like the hand, Louise.
I'm using the technology here on the hand. But I, I kind of like what Susan said, as far as like rotating, if we're going to like, I mean, I did it this time to try it out, to see what I would, you know, what it felt like. I personally don't like it as much as being with all you guys in the, in the actual dais. I wouldn't mind rotating through this process, though we each get a turn on, on being out, except for it might be kind of hard to be the chair and be sitting here. But I think you lose a lot. You, you lose a lot of the communication, you, the body language, all of it. I mean, like, like Robin said, you, we can see you guys, you can't see, I mean, we, it's different. It's just a different thing. So I, I would say, I'll go along with whatever the majority votes for, but I personally would rather see it kind of stay, you know, say the way it's saying, so say the way it is and see what happens in January.
Well, I have a thought, but before I express my thought. So Jeff, if we were to all be remote, what I found interesting in talking, so now I'm seeing Louise only on the screen. So the back and forth to be able to see everybody, you know, on the side there, the other commissioners that are remote, is helpful, because I can, back to the comment that Louise was making, I can see to some degree the body language, maybe a head nodding, a hand up or something like that. To me, that's kind of key, is in terms of running the, the meeting. So how good would we be, would it be any different if we were all remote, that Scott would be playing around with that and kind of teeing all that up? Or would it be any different that it doesn't matter that I'm here? Or we'd be doing, kind of getting the same feel? But that, to me, is a, kind of an important piece, to be able to sort of see what's going on, you know, visually, to kind of know, ooh, you know, Louise has her hand up or something like that. So I think that part would need to be done well. And I'm not saying that it wasn't done well, but to, to make the meeting work well, I think that piece would need to be pretty effective.
And we can certainly work on the technological side of it. As I understand Zoom, the, if everyone's remote, you have control over what appears on your screen.
Ah, okay.
You can have a gallery view. Scott, can you, can you help us out?
So as a chair, I'd be doing that, or?
There's the gallery view for Scott. So you can do that on your own laptop or iPad in your own home.
Okay.
You can also put it on active speaker, so that then the person who is speaking blows up into the screen.
Yeah.
And when someone else starts speaking.
I use Teams at work, and it, it's kind of that way, too.
So that's more on the receiving side of things.
Got it.
But I, I appreciate the comments. One, one comment I would like to address is, it was just my own thought that requesting two commissioners to participate remotely, I think we could squeeze all seven in here if we really wanted to. I don't, I don't want it to appear that the city planner is demanding two people, you know, participate by Zoom. I just think if you look and count the seats, it gets tough to get seven plus at least two staff. Barbara said she would Zoom tonight. It's a challenge, but it's not insurmountable. We, we could do it.
Well, here's a thought. I mean, our next meeting is January 11. We don't know exactly where this has gone, but we can make some presumptions that it's supposed to get a bit hairy. Again, just a suggestion, what if we were to just say for our next meeting, why don't we all go remote and give it a try? So that we can then say, yeah, we gave it a try, and it was okay, or it wasn't that great, or no, it was fantastic. So again, just a suggestion is, I carry no more weight than anybody else, just as, just as the chair, that we consider that for our next meeting, if that would be agreeable to, to folks? Again, just my opinion.
You know what I like? You're making a decision, so I'm for it. So let's, I mean, it's, it's half and half. So I just think if we're gonna, if we're gonna try to do something, if that's, you're our fearless leader, so if that's what you're saying, I will go along with that.
I would prefer that we get ready to go remote, but not call it that way until January, because we really have no idea.
Can't hear whoever's speaking.
Yeah, go, go ahead and bring the mic up.
That's the problem.
Sorry, my mic was not on. I would prefer that we get ready to go remote, but not call it until, like, January 1. The chances are very good that the pandemic is going to be worse in January than it is today, based on people's behavior, and that in fact, we will have to go remote. But we don't know. Maybe it will get better. And we do have a much better meeting when we're in person than we do when we're, when we're remote. So I prefer to defer that decision until we need to make it.
Okay, and as, in terms of preparing for the meeting, if we were to, Commissioner Busk's suggestion, wait until, you know, conceivably the last minute, it, it doesn't matter in terms of agendizing the meeting or, or anything else, or Brown Act. We could still do that up until January 8 or 9 or whatever, or do we have to plan for that?
Those are good questions. The, the way we have our, set up our noticing is, we keep it fairly generic, and it just simply says that we're holding a commission meeting at this time, this date. I think it does say in the chambers, however, the public's not allowed in the chambers. The notice does say that the commissioners have the option of calling in or participating by Zoom. We can broaden that language, but I also think it gives us cover right now that, well, everyone chose to participate by Zoom on this particular meeting. I'm not sure how it affects the, the public so much, and I'm not trying to be cavalier about it. I just honestly don't see how holding a Zoom meeting versus holding your meeting, some of you in here, affects the public participation.
Probably not.
They have to do Zoom anyways.
Right.
I think it's more an issue for the commission, and it's, it's risk versus efficiency, and, you know, the intimacy of having face-to-face discussions.
Okay. Commissioners online, thoughts about either tentatively saying, let's go to the 11th as a Zoom, or hold off and wait? What, what are your thoughts?
I would like to, it's planned, tentatively have, we'll make the decision at the last minute, or as late as possible. And we can be tentatively ready to go offline.
And maybe as a subset.
On or offline.
Yeah, maybe as a subset suggestion, and again, I'm sorry that I'm throwing all these things out there, but to the point that either you or one of the other commissioners made, that if we get to that last point and we decide we're going to have some of the folks here in the, on the dais, in the chambers, then maybe we rotate who then is remote Zoom. So try to find that compromise. So any other thoughts before maybe I give some direction to staff?
I do have one other thought.
Sure.
If we do. If we do try to rotate through, I think that anyone who is not comfortable coming to the chambers should obviously be staying at home and doing Zoom, and then anyone else can rotate through who doesn't mind coming in.
Okay, thank you. Hands or?
I second what Susan said.
Okay. Commissioner Goodkind or Crayhill? I, go ahead if you have any other last thoughts.
No, I think, I think there's a, you know, a 0.016 chance that the pandemic is going to be better by the time of our next meeting. So I think it probably would be, for practical reasons, good to prepare for an all-Zoom meeting.
Okay.
But, you know, I defer to, to you and staff, whatever works.
Okay. And then Commissioner Crayhill?
Yeah, I just, I like the idea of trying it. You know, we've tried to do kind of a split Zoom recently, you know, Commissioner Goodkind and I have been at home. So, you know, we've tried that, it's okay, it functions. But I think it's worth trying the all-Zoom to see if that's significantly better, and that may, we may find that to be the case. At least we can say we've tried it. I will say, I don't foresee myself coming back into the chambers until the pandemic is significantly better than it's been in the last few months. Not trying to hold the rest of you to that, but for my own self.
Yeah, same, same for me.
Okay.
And also for you, Mr. Chair, I think, to your point, I actually think, because of the Zoom controls, that it would be actually more, it would be more efficient for you and easier for you to see everyone if we're all on Zoom, that you can, you can have us all in gallery view or speaker view, and we're all kind of up there on your screen then.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so then I think we'll plan tentatively to go all Zoom on the 11th, subject to kind of see what's going on. Jeff, maybe you and I and Vice Chair Bauma kind of exchange some emails as we get closer to that date, and then, of course, we'll let the rest of the commissioners know what we're planning on doing. But tentatively, right now, I think we're sort of aiming to do it all by Zoom on the 11th unless something significantly happens. So good discussion, interesting times. And with that, I think we're done. I just want to wish everybody happy holiday season, be safe out there, of course, and let's hope we get through this with, with minimal, what's the word I'm looking for? That we get through this as unscathed as possible as a society and, and commissioners personally. So best of luck out there. Thank you, everybody. I think we're done with the agenda, so we're adjourned.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.